Hey, good evening. I'd like to call to order the November 5th City Council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God, please give this council and its citizens patience while we work through the issues that affect residents and visitors of Avalon. In your name we pray, amen.
Roll call Denise.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Morrow.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Ponce.
Here.
And Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
This governing body will be holding three separate meetings this evening. The Avalon City Council, the Avalon Housing Authority, and the Successor Agency. And the City Council will not be receiving any extra pay for any additional meetings.
Mr. City Manager, do you have any announcements or real communication?
I believe we have one presentation to add to the agenda this evening that's not on the agenda. And I don't think I'm speaking on terms to do that in my report. Okay, great. The Children's Dental Clinic would like to come forward, I believe, to do -- Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Morrow, you want to lead this one?
We're going to honor the Children's Dental Clinic and the benefactor of the Children's Dental Clinic here in Avalon. Today, the Children's Dental Clinic of Long Beach came over here and did an assembly at the school and did a number of programs with the kids to teach them about dental hygiene and other things. And there was a group of about probably 50 or 60 people that came over here. The City Manager was there at the luncheon today. We honored a number of people. We honored Kathy Moran and Mary Villa, who was the RN back in the 80s that took care of the kids, and Ken Putnam and Patty Ann McKenna and the Tuna Club for donations to the clinic over the years. It was a tremendous get-together. It filled up the dining room at the country club. It was a great event. Barbara Lieberman-Jones was back there coordinating the whole thing, and it worked out well. It was a great event. People were amazed at how many folks it took to put that dental clinic up at the school. And so tonight, we'll be honoring two of the entities. Bob, my job will be to read the proclamations. And Dr. Fosnot and Dr. Blake, could you come up here? Mayor Kennedy will be -- Dr. Fosnot is a member of the Tuna Club for a long time. He was one of the co-founders of the dental clinic, and Dr. Blake is the head of the dental clinic today. Two very important guys that have taken care of our kids from here. Proclamation of the City of Avalon honoring the Children's Dental Clinic and 25 years of service on Santa Catalina Island, whereas the Children's Dental Health Clinic is a nonprofit organization established in 1932, and whereas the vision of the Children's Dental Health Clinic is to see that all children grow up with healthy, confident smiles, and whereas the Catalina Children's Dental Clinic has been providing quality dental treatment and oral health education to the children of Santa Catalina Island for 25 years, whereas the Children's Dental Health Clinic is the safety net dental home for all of the Santa Catalina Island's children. Now therefore, the City of Avalon hereby commend and thanks the Children's Dental Clinic on their 81st anniversary celebrating 25 years of service on Catalina Island dated the 5th day of November, signed by the City Council. And the next honoree will be Patty Ann McKenna. Patty Ann is back there. There we go. Patty Ann McKenna has been a major donor to the Children's Dental Clinic. It was her idea to come forward and donate essentially the majority of the money that it took to put that dental clinic together. Without her, we would have never been able to do anything. We call her Avalon's angel. Proclamation of the City of Avalon honoring Patty Ann McKenna for her efforts at the Children's Dental Health Clinic, whereas Patty Ann McKenna is recognized as Catalina Children's Dental Clinic Avalon Angel, and whereas the new Catalina Clinic was made possible due to the great generosity of Patty Ann, and whereas Patty Ann supports the vision of the Children's Dental Health Clinic to see that all children grow up with healthy, confident smiles, and whereas the Children's Dental Health Clinic will benefit the individual and the family and the community, and whereas the City of Avalon would like to encourage our community to honor Patty Ann for sustaining the tradition of caring and sharing our hope of a better quality of life for all. Now therefore, the City of Avalon hereby commends Patty Ann McKenna and her generosity to the children of Santa Catalina Island in celebration of the Children's Dental Health Clinic 81st anniversary celebrating 25 years of service in Catalina Island dated this 5th day of November 2013, signed by the council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ralph.
Thank you.
For real communications, anyone in the audience care to address the council for any item that is not on our agenda? You may now come forward. And I know a handful of you in the audience have plans of catching a boat, so you're not going to hurt our feelings if you start peeling out here. We get it. Say hello to Lou Alarries as you go across town.
See ya.
This won't take long.
Now the room's going to get cold.
Oh, thanks.
Gotcha.
My name's Mary Boyd. For those of you who don't know me, I live at 13 Cabrillo Drive. I'm here to talk about the cross-channel carrier subsidy program. My daughter, who is actually on the boat right now coming home from a doctor's appointment, went to pick up her subsidy card on October 7th after returning from traveling for six months. She tried to return home sooner, but she had been sick since June, and it would have been hard for her to travel, so she decided to stay longer until it was more comfortable. She was denied on October 7th and given the program rules. Not once was she asked for documentation nor to explain any of her circumstances. I then contacted Denise Raddie and asked again for the rules and if I could get something in writing stating the reason for ineligibility for Jennifer Boyd. I only received the rules. I called her and asked again what the next step would be, and she replied that I could talk to the City Manager. So I wrote an appeal letter on October 8th and emailed it to Ben Harvey. I received a follow-up email on October 14th stating that Jennifer Boyd will have to start all over from the day she returned, which means reside on Catalina for six months before applying for a subsidy card. He also said that due to our program state funding source and audit requirements, we have to follow the program guidelines. What guidelines do the auditors look at, and where does the city get their information? Again, and how do you start over to become a resident when you have been on the island for the past 23 years and have done taxes here with this address and consider this your permanent home? In your rules, it states resident means physical presence as intent to make Catalina Island your principal place of residence. The following documents are evidence, but not conclusive proof of residency. Nine months of payroll stubs within a 12-month period. Jennifer hasn't worked since August of 2012. Prior to that, she had a full-time, consistent job since 2006. She decided to take some time to travel. While traveling, she was looking into college elsewhere. Another rule is nine months of rent receipts within a 12-month period. Jennifer has always had her room in our home, which she always intended to return home. On the rules, it states homeowner's exemption, a property tax bill for resident located on Catalina Island. I don't even know why this would be considered. Does this mean that they reside here nine months out of the year? Could this be taken as discrimination against those who cannot afford a home of their own? The rules also state that the city reserves the right to request additional information and/or documentation from the applicant and to rely on other credible information it obtains or receives to determine eligibility. Again, I ask, where do you get your information? And is it credible? We were not asked for any documentation at all. The city may request further information and/or documentation in situations such as children with shared custody, retirees, self-employed persons, full-time students, and requests to have unmarried significant others added to the card. Jennifer Boyd's situation was not even under consideration. Deep breath. I would ask that the council look into this situation and reconsider, as it has created a hardship for Jennifer this past month. Jennifer may not have been here a minimum of nine months this year, but she has maintained residency here for the past 23 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Good job.
Anyone else in the audience care to address the council for any item that's not on our agenda?
Hi. My name is Peter Alfen. I'm a resident of Manhattan Beach, and my wife and I own mooring number 16 and the boat Picnic. We've been coming to the island regularly for over 25 years, and our parents and grandparents have visited long before that, some back to the days of the 10th city. I retired last year from a 30-year career in software development and quality improvement, and my wife and I have enjoyed spending many weeks here on our boat the last two summers. I recently volunteered to help city staff with bay water quality improvement efforts, particularly with respect to information systems. I wanted to come tonight to introduce myself and say thank you for your efforts on behalf of Avalon, a place we've come to think of as our second home. In particular, the water quality this last summer was the best in 10 years, and I wanted to thank you for the major investments you've made that have led to that result. Like most residents and visitors, we have a long list of things we'd like to preserve about Avalon, as well as some ideas about how things could be improved. Just want to say I look forward to contributing in both respects in the coming months and years. Thanks.
Thanks. Thank you. Mary? Anyone else? Okay, we have a closed session item this evening?
Yeah, we have one closed session item before the regular calendar. It's existing litigation, the Hermosa Hotel versus City of Avalon.
We shall return shortly. Would you care to report back, Scott?
No reportable action.
Okay, consent calendar.
Okay, yes, Mayor, you have eight items on your consent calendar this evening, including one, the City of Avalon acting as a successor agency to the Avalon Community Improvement Agency. I'm going to refrain from reading the items on the consent calendar for you.
Okay, we have the seven items on the consent calendar. Any member of the audience care to comment on anything that's currently on our consent calendar?
Eight.
Eight?
Eight.
Seven plus the one?
Yeah.
I get it. Counsel?
Can't ask the public, they know where it is.
I'll move approval. One through eight.
I'll second.
Okay, call for a vote, please.
Uh-oh.
Ralph, Ralph, watch it. Went to do it and wasn't here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Oh, here it is, right here.
All ayes.
All right, now that we got that worked out.
Okay, moving on to general business, you have two items tonight, Mayor and Council. The first item, number nine, pertains to the April 8th, 2014 Avalon General Municipal Election. And Ms. Raddie, your Chief Administrative Officer, City Clerk, is going to give you a report on this. Ms. Raddie.
I'll make sure, buddy, for the audience, that the date I printed wrong. So it is April 8th, 2014, not 2013. It is the second Tuesday of April. Before you, we have three resolutions. One is for calling the election. Second one is for asking the county for their services, and the third one is statement guidelines. Historically, on the statement guidelines, the candidate pays $175, that's approximate, for translating their statement into Spanish, and we charge approximately $200 to cover the cost for that statement to be printed in the pamphlets. And so I'm asking for you to approve all those resolutions so we can proceed forward with the election.
Anyone in the audience care to comment? Counsel, anyone care to entertain a motion then on item number nine?
Oh, I have something, one more thing, I'm sorry. Papers can be pulled on Monday, December 16th, and you have till January 10th, which is a Friday at 5:00 PM, to file.
Unless incumbent doesn't file them.
Correct. And we have the Office of the Mayor and two council members. Councilmember Ponce's seat is up, and Councilmember Morrow's seat is up.
I'll move again.
What's your motion?
Move the three of those resolutions.
I'll second.
Call for a vote, please.
All ayes.
Okay, item number 10 is the adoption of the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget. Tonight, we have our management consultant, Ms. Chuchard, here, and she is going to provide you with a presentation of the budget, an overview of which you've already received informally, but I'd like to turn it over at this point to Gina for her to provide a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Wanted to make sure you have this large 11-by-17. If not, I can bring one over to you. It's your last page in your packet.
In the really small print?
Really small print.
In the really, really small print?
Really small print.
You gotta figure it out, Mike. I'll check it out.
Okay. Thank you.
And what I'll do is I'll go through a brief introduction of the budget to formally enter it in. We are pleased to bring you the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget, which covers the period of July 1st, 2013, through June 30th, 2014. In June, you passed a continuing budget resolution that allowed the city to continue operating financially since July 1st. You have also been proactive in providing direction to staff on citywide goals, property assessment fees, capital improvement projects, and operational efficiencies. The budget proposed this evening includes the direction provided during three budget study sessions and feedback from various public hearings. The proposed budget presented for fiscal year 13-14 is $22,316,694 in total revenues and $23,937,949 in total expenditures. Overall expenditures exceed revenues by $1.6 million. The $1.62 million is covered by the net of prior year spendable revenue or reserves of $1.7 million and $139,000 of current revenue that exceeds expenditures in certain funds. And I'll go through this in the chart. The beginning spending balance, or the reserves that we have estimated at this point in time that will change by the time we finally bring it to you when the fiscal year 13 audit is done, is $10 million as of June 30th, 2013. The ending spending balance that we anticipate at the end of June 2014 is $8.4 million, a difference of that $1.6 million, the net of those two numbers I gave you. The general fund is balanced at $7.8 million, with revenues equalling expenditures. The estimated spendable fund balance for the general fund at the end of fiscal year 14 is $4 million. When combined with other general funds, the spendable fund balance reduces to 3.6, and I'll go through this in detail in the chart. Wanted to let you know we did include lower tariffs at $1.3 million. The successor will be paying for that. Successor fund will be paying for that. We have over $1.5 million in time operating and capital expenditures for the sewer and saltwater funds. We're initiating a long-term financial weight analysis for the sewer and saltwater funds in order to ensure future viability. We are including also $150,000 for information technology upgrades. The city's system currently is about 10 years old in terms of its viability compared to We're also allocating $6,000 for fencing for Skateboard Park, $50,000 for the Joe Machado concession stand, and we are also adding a position, a new management aid position in the City Manager's office and recreation to assist with various special projects. We're upgrading two Maintenance Worker 1 positions to Maintenance Worker 2 within the Sewer-Saltwater Enterprise, and we've added the new at-will Chief Administrative Officer position. This is a brief summary of the additions that we've made to the budget. Now, what I like to do is go through the 11-by-17 to introduce it to you as well as the public, and I'll do it briefly because I know we've discussed it at various times. The budget document is divided into several areas of funds. We have general funds, which you can spend those monies anywhere, on anything. Special revenue funds, which are restricted, those are grants. Proprietary funds, those funds are funds that have fees related to their operations, and those fees should be spent in that particular fund. Internal service funds are items like your vehicle fund and overhead funds that charge other funds to provide services or products in the case of a vehicle. And fiduciary funds, which is strictly the successor agency fund, which is highly restricted funds. Now, if we're moving from left to right on this chart, the beginning column is the estimated beginning fund balance column, the $10 million that I indicated before that will change by the time we're done with the fiscal '13 audit. The revenue column at $25.3 million is the total revenues that we anticipate getting, that we're projecting to get by the end of June 30th. And then we have transfers in of $818,000, transfers in from other funds to assist those particular funds, with the total expected revenue B of revenue plus transfers in equals expected revenue. Continue to move to the right, and that total expected number, by the way, is $26.1 million. Moving to the right, we have operating expenditures, again, $26.9 million, and that's what we anticipate spending by the end of June 30th, with transfers out going to other funds. And that balances, that transfer out, transfer in balances at $818,000, needs to equal, with the total expense column of C of $27.8 million, which is the operating expenditures plus transfers out. Now, this is where we get to the fun part. It's now we take the expected revenue of $26.1 and expected expenditures of $27.8, and we created a delta environment for you. We've created two columns, one indicating those funds that have a negative, which means expenditures exceed revenues. And I split those out so that you could see the total number. And if you look down at the total, it's $1.7 million in terms of, across all funds. And I want to remind you that the general fund is balanced, there's no, there isn't a deficit there. The delta column addition are those funds that revenues actually exceed expenditures, and that totals $139,000. Now, during the year, technically, we can come back and allocate those revenues to expenditures. We would have to come back to you, though, and do that. So the net of $1.7 and $139,000 is that $1.6 million, $1.6 million, for a total ending balance of $8.4 million compared to the beginning balance, which was $10 million. Again, the difference is $1.6. So you're, at the end of June 30th, we're anticipating for next year that we'll have $8.4 million in the bank. And again, that's still an estimate because our beginning balances are still estimates. Now, in that ending balance column, you'll see squares around. This is where we get into the governmental funds, where you can, basically, there are restrictions in those funds, but technically, they're in the accounting side, they're married, so they affect each other when you tie them all together. When we look at that group as a whole, the surpluses and the negatives, the deficits in those funds, it starts, it ends up being $3.6 million estimated fund balance. So you see $4 million for the general fund. When we combine all those together, that is reduced to 3.6 overall. That just gives you an idea of the governmental funds being married. That feels like a, it's a positive indicator versus what we discussed several months ago for the general fund. As we move down the columns, there, and I apologize, and I think on the copy I gave you, it may not be so clear, but there are other married funds. The Harbor Fund has two funds associated with it, the Operations Fund and the Infrastructure Fund. The Operations Fund is at a negative at the ending balance of $122,000, and the Infrastructure Fund has a surplus of $1.9 million. Now, those are married for a net of $1.8 million. When we do get the final fiscal year 13 spendable balances, we're going to come back to you and transfer monies between those funds to balance out that Operations Fund. Technically, it should be balanced. Auditing-wise, they're together, so they are, they're merged, but we're going to bring it back budgetarily to you to balance them. The next set of funds are the sewer funds, and there are three funds there for the operations, for the infrastructure, and for the wastewater treatment plant. And over the years, the property taxes for those particular funds are allocated at a percentage rate to each of those. And you can see the Operations Fund is at a deficit at year-end of $190,000. The Infrastructure Fund ending reserve is $134,000, and the wastewater treatment plant reserve is $1.1 million. Now, the wastewater treatment reserve is carrying these funds for a total married reserve of $1.1 million. Now, I have to say, it isn't as bad as I originally thought it was going to be, but it's still, you're digging into the reserve by $640,000 in one fund. So we have a little bit of time to get those grants going and to lobby the state and whatever we need to do to go out there and tell our story. And I could also say that Dennis J. is working with RBF to identify the true cost of the future improvements on the island, which are very different and unique from the mainland. Then we have saltwater, the saltwater funds, and there are two there. There are operations, and then there's also the infrastructure. Operations is an ending balance of $502,000. If you notice on that line, though, it did have a current year deficit of $131,000. It is, revenues are not, we're exceeding, expenditures are exceeding our revenues, and it's digging into, going into the reserves. The Infrastructure Fund is underwater, technically.
Saltwater fresh.
Yes. And for a total married reserve of $172,000, this is the most critical issue that we have right now. If we do go over this year, it'll take from the general fund. All of these basically roll up to the general fund technically. And then the solid waste plant fund, it has an ending, it will have a year-end ending -- And for a total married reserve of 172,000, this is the most critical issue that we have right now. If we do go over this year, it'll take from the general fund. All of these basically roll up to the general fund technically. And then the solid waste plant fund. It has an ending, it will have a year-end ending deficit of $14,000 if we spend according to budget plan, for a total deficit of 88,000. The solid waste infrastructure has a surplus of 298,000 for a married reserve of 210,000. Now, the, what is going on in this one is that we're going to be looking at overhead allocation cost here and revisiting that to see how we're applying it there. And we're definitely going to change that formula and work with that for the next budget we may come forward before, before year-end to look at that as well. The great thing about the book's closing is that there's a window there to make adjustments, even after June 30th of next year. And I've not really told the good news here. Again, you know I'm positive. And the general fund is balanced, and that is really good news. The prior year, just to give you a little bit of the actuals, yes, expenditures in fiscal year 13 exceeded revenues, but your revenues exceeded their projections. I think I said that backwards. Expenditures exceeded the budget amount, revenues exceeded the budget amount. So, and revenues still exceeded the expenditures. So that's why we kind of built up our reserves a little bit in the general fund. The other funds, again, not as lucky as that one. We still have to look at the, at our structures, at our internal service funds and how they're charging other funds, vehicle, insurance, and overhead funds, and to make sure that those are efficient machines. So, as well as how we're collecting revenues as well. So there's a lot of, what's built into this budget are analysis for sewer, saltwater. We're going to have a waste, excuse me, a wage and compensation analysis done and a cost allocation analysis done to assist us with this, to build a foundation to move forward on the budget. So it's kind of creating a new skeleton, a foundation going forward. So it will look different than it does here, but we wanted to do an apples-to-apples comparison to all your prior year budgets. So if you had questions about how you restructured, we could answer those. But going forward, you will, you will see a different-looking budget as we work on that. And if you have any questions? I am available.
Start with folks in the audience. You have any questions? Let me start with a couple. Fund 119, what is the revenue source for that fund?
This is community development block grant.
Right.
Yes, so federal fund.
Federal money.
Yeah, so we're going to take in 3,500 bucks, and we're going to spend 50.
And this is a reimbursement. It's for the lower, it's for low-mod sewer improvements, laterals. So when, if this expenditure occurs, you'll also have a corresponding revenue side. And this is a reminder to staff and everybody that if we go forward with this, we're going to have to seek reimbursement to get that balanced for that fund. So it's the sewer lateral, the low-mod income sewer lateral program, and it's $35,000.
So we could use our low-mod housing money for that?
It's CDBG money. It's CDBG money. Community development block grant money.
Another pool of money.
Yes.
You know, the expression "living within your means" comes to mind. What's that, Ollie?
Well, we talk about how the general fund is balanced, but in actuality, when you look at the money that the enterprise funds transfer back to the general fund for overhead, that's where we're getting balanced. And I think we need to seriously talk about the dollar amounts that we are allocating for overhead, but like for the solid waste, $220,000 overhead seems a little on the excessive side.
And I should correct, if I misspoke earlier, the general administration fund, which is Fund 101, is the internal service fund. It isn't included into the, in the general fund at this time. It does charge the general fund, though. So, but the, we're anticipating, actually, since most cities do include those key features in the general fund, of moving that 1.8 there and then charging appropriately.
I understand, is 1.8 the right number? It sounds a little on the high side in some of the categories.
1.8. It's, it's an estimate of what those internal funds will be spending. If it, if it is at 1.8, then we will be charging the exact number. They're self-balancing funds. We only charge what we spend. So 1.8 is the budget amount for general administration. So if it's less than that, if it's 1.5, then at year-end, in those few months after the year is done, there's a cleanup.
History says we'll spend the 1.8. Sorry, I just, I agree with Bob. I mean, we have a budget, we're in the hole, 1.6, and...
So this is a starting point, and you're right. And so the plan going forward is to have this as our beginning, and from here, move forward and have a living document that we modify throughout the year. And we're going to be meeting with the employees, we're going to be meeting with the employee associations, and we're going to be working together to figure out how we achieve some efficiencies, how we raise some revenues, how we live within our means. You're right. And we do need to, as Gina was speaking, we do need to conduct some studies to determine the appropriate allocations of staff salaries and times to certain functions, and that's going to be helpful for us. But there's an adjustment that's going to be made. You're absolutely right.
I figured we're out of money in four years.
Right. And this doesn't address, what are the items in the wishlist that aren't in this document currently? We have the fuel dock. How much of the fuel dock is in here now?
We removed it.
Okay, so...
None of the moles in there.
And the moles are removed?
Let's just make a quick hit list here.
The moles are removed as well.
The mole?
It's not in there either.
The mole?
It's not in there.
Lateral repairs on...
Private, the private sewer, sewer laterals? So it goes back to reviewing the budget priorities, which I think is where you're going, Mayor, and determining, and then to what I've heard from you and other members of the council, determining a target amount to set forward for years' future because this will likely be more than one-year process to restructure ourselves so that we don't continually have this deficit.
And I think my goal is, I don't want to follow behind the lead of the federal government. Now, they seem to have a hard time making the hard decisions, and I think that we have supported the community to actually make those hard decisions. And there's going to be some things that we can live without. There's going to be some things where, you know, other revenue opportunities. But where we stand right now with this one document is we either need to reduce spending by 7% or increase revenue by 7% or some combination thereof to get this document balanced. And that's before we spend $2 million on a fuel dock, $10 million on a mole. Those numbers, okay, I mean, they're the...
Right, I mean, the use of the term "one-time expenses" is kind of a misuse, right? Because there is an ongoing need to replace our aging infrastructure.
Right, and the reason, you know, the one-time use monies is kind of a misnomer anyway because the reason we've got all these infrastructure issues is that whatever governing body at that time decided not to spend the money on it in the first place. So here we are paddling upstream and currently without a paddle.
And a leaky boat.
And a leaky boat. Yeah. Once a month, you know, go department by department after you get an all-hands meeting and figure out where we're going and finding out, you know, we may surprise ourselves and some department heads may come back to the table and say, "Well, I can really do without that, and I can really do without that," and we may surprise ourselves a bit. Exciting. Any questions? Yeah, I wasn't real fond of the federal government holding the budget process hostage, so I won't quite go that far, but we need to really go after this thing and attack it, so...
It's our priority.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I thought it was going to be a lot worse than this. Basically, we start out with $10 million in the bank, and at the end of the fiscal year, we'll end up with $8 million in the bank, all plus. So it's a little bit down, but we've got a lot of room in here to work. And now, after this, the council's got to be looking at where to cut, and that's going to take us some time. But I'm pretty happy with this. The finance department did a great job. Gina, good job. I'm surprised.
I agree, it's a good job, but I'm still unhappy with reserves going down 20%. It's just, we're spending the wrong way.
At least we have reserves. A lot of these cities don't have any reserves.
When I was here 30 years ago, we had like $14 million. That was, $14 million is a lot of money.
Yes.
And we can't spend reserves because they won't last forever, they're reserves. And where we need to have some reserves, we're depleting the reserves in our enterprise funds. I mean, look at the saltwater fund. I mean, it's turned really south. And we know about the valves that got to get replaced. We know about all the stuff that we're replacing it. It's just, we're going the wrong way. But if we knew this, if we had the information we have now, last year, we could have helped stem some of this. But, I mean, it was Gina's help and Cindy's help to get us turned around so we understand where we are financially or physically.
And I think that's an important headline, that at least we know specifically where we are and what we've expended in the past, and we've got a better picture. So it might not be the picture we want to see, but at least we can see it.
Hey, anyone care to entertain a motion then on item number 10?
I will, to adopt the budget, adopt the resolution, adopt the budget.
I'll start, sorry.
Is there any caveat in there?
That I expect that we're going to see some revisions through the year.
Thank you.
All ayes.
Thank you, Bobby.
You're welcome.
So at this point, Mayor, are we moving to the housing authority?
Yes. Call the housing authority of the city of Alun to order a roll call, Denise.
Commissioner Morrow?
Here.
Commissioner Olson?
Present.
Commissioner Ponce?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
And Chairman Kennedy?
Present. Oral Communications. Anyone in the audience care to address the housing authority for any item that is not currently on our agenda? You may now come forward. I don't see anyone race to the podium. Consent calendar.
Yes, Mayor, there are two items on your consent calendar this evening, and I will refrain from reading both of them to you.
How does the public know what we're talking about?
They can view the agenda, and if a member of the public wishes to speak on any item, they can so indicate their interest.
Perfect.
Okay, on the consent calendar's actions and the Second Amendment of the RSG Consulting Agreement, anyone in the audience care to comment on any of those two items, either of those two items? Counsel? Anyone care to entertain a motion then on the two items on consent?
I make a motion to approve the two items on consent.
Second. Call for a vote, please.
All ayes.
General Business, Ben.
General Business, there is one item on your agenda this evening. It is the approval of an exclusive negotiation agreement with Hamilton Pacific LLC. I would like to call your attention to a couple things about this item before handing it over to the city attorney for the report. The first being, there was a letter from the island company placed on your, at your desk that was received today that relates to this item and is referenced in the staff report, so please review that. I'd also like to point out that Mr. Flynn is with us this evening, should you wish to have him come speak on this as well. So, Mr. City Attorney, would you like to present the report on this?
Yes, this is the agreement that the Housing Authority Board previously authorized us to negotiate with Mr. Flynn. By this agreement, the housing authority is setting aside $3.8 million in funds for a 48-unit low and... and low-low housing project in the city. This only commits us to negotiating with Mr. Flynn to do studies in terms of the economic analysis of his development, to see if it makes sense, to see if the cost structure is going to be appropriate, to also do a needs test where we will see if there's actually a need for the 48 units of housing. What this does is it sets aside that money while we're doing all these studies, coming forward hopefully by the end with a development agreement with Mr. Flynn or with Hamilton Pacific for the use of this money. This approval of the negotiating agreement does not obligate the authority to spend this money. It merely says that during this period, we're not going to be negotiating with anyone else to spend this money. All the costs set forth in the negotiation period are spent by Hamilton Pacific, so there's no cost to the authority for this. All funds are paid for by the developer, not the authority. What this does is it basically puts this, these funds in a lockbox in terms of negotiating for someone else while we try and see if this makes sense for the city and the community. Again, it does not obligate you to spend it. It's we're going to be studying this with the hopes of coming forward with a development agreement at the end of this process. If during the course of this process, the authority or Mr. Flynn, or I'm sorry, Hamilton Pacific decides that it doesn't make sense, we can terminate this agreement and free up the money. And so this has been reviewed by Hamilton Pacific's attorney in our office, and we're recommending that, given counsel's direction to allocate the 3.8 million, that we, that you authorize this. This agreement is, for the actual expenditure of the funds, that would have to go through the State of California Department of Finance approval. So we can spend the money now in terms of negotiating it, but when you actually spend the money, you have to go through Department of Finance approval. And that's, that's some time away because we actually have a development, we need to have a development agreement for the expenditure of those funds. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Anyone have questions for staff? Anyone in the audience care to comment? Brian.
Brian Bray, 350 Los Lomas. I just want to know, when does infrastructure come into play when planning new development? I'm being asked to conserve water, yet we're talking about adding 48 more units to town. Where will they shop? What store? I mean, is Vaughn's really going to build? And are they able to get a peel box? And is the sewer plant ready to accept 48 more units? And it's more of a statement than a question.
Thank you, Brian. It's right on the money there, isn't it?
Part of the process that is involved in this is during this negotiating period, we are analyzing the infrastructure needs, whether this project will support that, who's going to pay for infrastructure? That's all part of the negotiation.
So the water issue will be up to Edison, too, at the time?
Right, well, it's up to Edison, but as part of this, you know, again, the infrastructure is not only, it's sewer, saltwater, and fire. So that's going to be part of the analysis as to whether this project makes sense.
Traffic, all of those things are part of the...
Absolutely, yeah.
Any other comments from the audience? Direction, counsel?
I'll move approval.
We have a second?
I'll second. And as we go down the path and we don't find a need, who pulls the plug?
Either party can pull the plug. There's a certain notice period that you have to give each other for it.
Okay.
Do we have a motion in a second? A call for a vote, please.
Four ayes, Kennedy, Morrow, Hernandez, and Olson, one no, Councilmember Ponce. Four ayes, Kennedy, Morrow, Hernandez, and Olson, one no, Councilmember Ponce.
Executive Director's report?
I have none.
Okay. The housing authority meeting is adjourned. Fall back toward the council meeting. City manager report?
Yes, Mayor, I think just to review the budget that was adopted this evening, it's city staff's intention to be focusing on this during the coming year. As I indicated, we are planning on meeting with all the employees to make sure they understand where the city sits, make sure the employee associations are aware as well. We'd like to work collaboratively to try to determine some options, efficiencies, solutions. So we will be coming back to you frequently with budget amendments, so we just thank you for your patience as we move through this. We do anticipate that a riding of the boat, if you will, will be a multi-year process. I don't envision us reaching a resolution and getting into calmer waters within a one-year or even a two-year period. That's all I have.
Be nice to put a "cut" in it, though.
We will achieve, yes, we will achieve a lot in that time period, but I don't know that we'll be exactly where we want to be.
Scott, anything?
Just a little bit on the successor agency. We are still waiting for the Department of Finance to approve the contract for the work at Lower Terrace Road. So we're holding on signing that contract because do not want to sign that contract, which is between the city and the Boulder construction, until the Department of Finance approves the use of the redevelopment funds for that. If we were to sign the contract now and the Department of Finance would turn that down, then the city would have to spend that money, and we'd be looking at a larger deficit. So we're waiting for that. We've, we've answered all their questions about the project. We've provided them documentation that the money will be spent during the six months starting in January, and we're hopeful that we get that approval any day now.
So is the timeframe with...
Well...
More or less?
It could be tomorrow, or it could be in two or three weeks from now. We are, we called them up last week, we made sure they had all the information, but we made a call today, they still haven't issued the letter. And so as soon as we get that information, assuming it is an approval, we will sign the contract and work will begin. If it's not an approval, then we appeal. The appeal takes a week, two, two weeks. So we should have prompt resolution of this regardless. But again, we're waiting for the state of California to give us their blessing.
What's new? Yes. Avalon High School football team won its league, Coastal League. They'll have the first CIF game here next Friday at 5:00 up at Joe Bonchata Field.
They actually won a coin toss?
We, no. The first one we won, we got home field because we were the league champions. The second one, we won the coin toss. So if we win on Friday, we will have another home game here a week from Friday. So, yes, the room went very quiet when Earl won the flip, because Earl never wins flips. I mean, this is the first flip he's ever won. So be up there and support your local guys, and that's it.
I got one announcement. Veterans Day is 11/11, November 11th, at 11:00. VFW will do a program out at the Veterans Park at the mole. All are invited. That's it.
I've got one item on my hit list, and it's just kind of to throw at staff's way to think about. We've gone through some pretty extensive efforts in trying to get trashcans in the hands of the residents that have locking and closing lids, and I do understand everybody has the right to choose not to use them, you know, based on property location or whatever. But what's obvious to me now is the Ravens are now reduced in the number of bins that they can target and attack, so if they do find one without a lid now, that entire can is scattered all over Avalon. So I don't know whether it is appropriate to start fining those that don't have lids or coming up with some sort of resolution, but it's, it's pretty bad.
We can address that and come back to you with some suggestions.
We have a code that has that, so we can enforce that, yes.
Okay, awesome.
Are we going to put the budget online?
Yes.
Not the 11-by-17 sheet, maybe a little more simplified one.
I would be in favor of putting that online, too, but all of it online, and that's our full intention. Tomorrow, we would be able to upload that. I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that.
You know, Excel does some really nice pie charts. It would help people simplify.
It'll also be available at the counter for anyone that wants a copy, too.
Cool.
Okay, excellent. Closed session.
Yeah, we have two closed sessions, both public employee performance evaluation, fire
Okay, we've returned from closed session. Would you care to report back, Scott?
No report allowed.
This meeting is adjourned. I knew it. How did we know he was going to say that?